We already opened the meeting this evening and went into executive session. So we're going to pick up on the board agenda with the Board of Education Spotlight, item six.
All right, we are very excited this evening to recognize some scholastically talented seniors who are being recognized for their exemplary academic performance. These four students are commended students. They placed among the top 50,000 scores who entered the 2023 competition by taking the 2021 preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, better known as the PSAT. Our four students, the Board of Education is happy to recognize these four outstanding individuals. I think we have three of them here this evening. So I'm going to call your name, and Mr. Marier, our Board Vice President, is going to hand your certificate and we'll get a photo. Congratulations to our commended students for the 2023 National Merit Scholarship Program. We'll first start with Aaron Hansen. Lauren Gazgen. Gillian Parker. And Zachary Trichler.
Okay, moving on to the next part of the agenda, our Correspondence Board activities, Committee Reports, and on October 20th, there was a Wellness Committee meeting. If anyone is prepared to report on that.
I was present, I was certainly do report on what was discussed. We had a meeting, and the next meeting that will occur for the Wellness Committee is going to be in February, February 16th. It was, it was actually a pretty lengthy meeting. Went over, the Wellness Committee met three newsletters, three newsletters throughout the school year, and we were asked, each member of the committee to provide an article so that Kristen Foot can help with that, putting that together. So it's an input from everybody. Kristen was very pleased that from the PDC day that they had, the takeaway, one reoccurring theme was that she's focusing on with teachers and staff, as well as what you focus on becomes reality. She just really put that out there, tried to weight some of the negative, helped people positives. We also had a conversation with our food service supervisor, Donna, and I apologize, I do not know her last name, Rights, Donna Rights. And there was conversations about free and reduced lunch programs, different, different community eligibility programs, and she discussed with us that unfortunately, right now, our community doesn't meet those requirements. Again, we're trying to possibly do food to the table share, a lot of, a lot of requirements on different farmers, though, to be able to produce those foods to the school districts. So there's some hurdles. And I think we ended on that, if anybody else, I know, colleagues.
I think you covered just about everything. Just percentage wise, we're at about 32% free and reduced lunch, and we're asking about what level we need to be to continue with that free program, and it needed to be 40%. So we're not close to being able to provide that to all of our students like we did during that time of COVID. And then the last thing was the Wellstat one, where we were viewing the policy, we're actually doing second reading through Wellness Policy tonight, and at the building level now, they're going to do an assessment to see how well that policy is being implemented by the building, and all that information needs to be submitted to Kristen Foot by the 16th of February, to see where we're at and how successful we are with that implementation. Next up, we had between October 27th and October 29th, many of us attended the NISBA Annual Convention, which is held in Syracuse this year. This was the first in-person convention we've attended since 2019 back in Rochester. So I'm not sure if anyone would like to speak to the different sessions that they went to.
I can go first. So I thought it was a, it was a great convention. It was a little weird being in Syracuse, having been to 11 others outside of town, but I thought it went well. Because I'm new on the DEI Committee, I actually focused on some of the topics related to the DEI type things to kind of come up to speed on some of the current issues and topics. So I did attend several, so that was focused on diversity, some LGBTQ topics, the initiatives being done at the state level, and then just primarily what I got out of them, the things that other districts were doing or not doing. And I actually felt that, you know, we were in pretty good shape as far as where we're moving compared to a lot of the districts that I discussed. They haven't even started a lot of this stuff. So overall, it was a good, good experience, and always the networking with what's happening in other school districts around the, around the state, I thought were, were great. So, so that was my experience.
I'll agree with you on the networking. It's always good to kind of talk with people from other districts and see what's going on. A lot of sessions are kind of revolved around that as well. I, I think one of the memorable things for me was actually just seeing the electric buses and the, and the showroom floor there and kind of getting an understanding of what's involved with that, as we're moving towards that in terms of state requirements. So being able to see those was pretty amazing.
I was, I had the opportunity to attend this year. Last year wasn't held, so this is my first year, it was a great opportunity. And I, I hit a lot of great sessions that really iterated that the things that we're doing here in Viva are, you know, spot on. Lot of conversations, a couple of the, the sessions I went to were school elections and board budget vote, different ways people can, you know, their district's run their votes and budgeting votes, elections and budget votes, sorry. Anatomy of a School District, or setting, I'm sorry. The Anatomy of District Goal Setting and the Importance of Districtal Setting. Telling Your Story was the session with Through Data was the session that Danielle and Joe presented, and it was a packed room. And I, I did hear, I mean, Joe or Danielle shared with us that you have people contacting you already to inquire about the program and the good that it does. And the last one was the Strategies for Effective Board Meeting. It's, again, to Jeff's point, it's really interesting to hear different school districts ask different questions, you know, how late are your meetings? Do you do this? Do you do that? And then I just found like we were really grounded, we have a commonality, and we're doing, you know, what we need to be doing for the district and the kids. So it was a great opportunity.
I could just chime in, I do want to make sure Danielle does get the credit. She was the, the one that really led that workshop, and to the comments that Shelley mentioned, we have received feedback from other districts. We actually did receive the, the survey data back too, and kudos to Danielle because the, the rating was high, and hopefully NISBA will ask us back in the future for future consideration.
I attended the law conference, the pre-convention law conference, and it was a full day packed. I'll just quickly touch upon, not details, but just a variety of topics and things that boards are tasked with overseeing. One session is textbooks, library books, and more managing the challenges. There's a segment on SED perspective on the state of education, on topics such as academic freedom and student discipline. Another one, employees' free speech in the First Amendment, public and non-public schools, our legal relationships and obligations, special education update, and collective bargaining. The keynote speaker this year was Marlee Matlin. It was phenomenal. She spoke us, focusing on the abilities and not the disabilities of students, and that the mind and how powerful it is, and having the positive attitude. Talked about DEI, but adding the A of access being the huge message and being inclusive of everybody. Just as Jeff, I attended a variety of different things, actually everyone. I think we did a very good job as a team communicating with each other and going in different sessions to maximize and bring back as much knowledge as we can. My, the ones I attended was packing for the Equity Journey, just making sure we challenge our learners regardless of what level they're at. This one I found very, very interesting, changing the culture of data-informed decision-making with academic return on investment. A lot of great ideas coming from that, utilizing the data that Danielle has put together, and bringing in the financial piece of that and seeing if we're getting, using our dollars and maximizing finding gaps, overlaps, et cetera, to be more efficient. I also attended the Anatomy of just a goal setting. I attended that back in 2017, but once previewing the slides prior to, I realized there's a lot more that they've added since I attended, and we're, you know, doing a great job bringing in all the different stakeholders, especially with that survey that we just put out to the community. Telling Your Story, I went to the data, wanted to support our district presenters, which was phenomenal, packed room. Attended the conversation with the Commissioner Saturday morning, talking about the different ways for graduation requirements possibly changing, talked about the Safety Task Force with the mental health and restorative practices, also discussed the misinformation out there about DEI and the Culture Responsive Sustainability Framework, the different, the inequity between different school districts around the state was another topic. And then Teacher of the Year, Willie Green spoke, which he's a science teacher down in New York City, phenomenal presenter, talked about the homogeneous groups and heterogeneous groups, and really taking a deep dive and realizing even amongst the homogeneous groups how diverse they are. That was the biggest takeaway for me from that one. And then another one about Board Individual Rights and Collective Responsibilities, how we're a group of one, but we do have our First Amendment nights and talking a lot about the social media aspect, which is challenging different boards across the state. And then the School Board Musical, which I've never attended because it's usually out of town, and I want to get home to see my family, but this year, since it's in town, I actually went to see that, and that was good, and a little bit of a chuckle, a lot of the challenges within the musical are things that we, as a board, have experienced and realized that many boards hearing people chuckling around and whispering behind us, I was like, yeah, we go through that too. But for me, on a personal note, I mentioned to everyone that I wasn't going to be running after this term, so I said that back in the summertime, and just getting that full thing of realizing there, it was a part of my heart, realizing how important this job is. It almost could have pulled me back because I, there's so much to learn out there, and just encouraging all you guys to really utilize those professional development opportunities and bring as much back to the district as you can to help push us forward. It was, it was bittersweet, incredible experience, happiest of the hometown, but I will miss that part of the job for sure. I'm not sure if anyone else has anything to speak, there's, there's a lot. Wayne, this was your first experience, what do you think?
Yeah, I don't know how I can follow that, but yeah, I thought it was great. I went to a bunch of different sessions, a lot of information, I mean, it's all been kind of overwhelming, but the main thing that stuck out to me was the collaboration, and not to echo everything that everyone's already said, but just how we are, you know, where we need to be in regards to, you know, running meetings and whatever else, you know, all the information there. They would say, you should try this or do this, and I, okay, we do that, we do that. So it was pretty rewarding knowing that we are where we are. And there was one session that I went to that stuck out to me, was called Same Here, and basically it was a different perspective on mental health, again, going back to collaboration and then trying not to, you know, stigmatize and separate people like, oh, you have a problem and I don't, so I don't have to worry about it. It was more about the collaboration and understanding where they're coming from, and oh yeah, I get nervous too, you know, or I, you know what I mean, and just trying to normalize it. And the presenters were great, and it was really, really good information. That was the one that I think that was the most impactful, and of course, just to talk about the musical was pretty great, very entertaining. They had a school from ESM that was also a part of the musical, they were the chorus, and it was great, it was a lot of fun.
And when you just said musical, we also, McNamara Orchestra was there, I'm playing the atrium before one of the sessions, so that was a nice honor for our students to have school board members from across the state there to really appreciate the efforts and the talents that our group has, and our music instructors to get them to that level. It was very impressive.
Yeah, and there was a great turnout for their performance, too.
Sam, I know this was your first time, I have to put you on the spot, but I didn't want to forget you on the screen if there's anything you wanted to say. Oh, she can't hear. Oh, okay. I'm sorry, Sam. Are you muted? I'm sorry, Sam, we can't hear you. Okay, go on. Okay, go on, the sign might, okay. On Wednesday, November 7th, or 2nd, excuse me, the DEI Committee meeting, the DEI Committee had a meeting.
Yeah, it was, it was a good meeting. We had training, kind of, a couple of our learning coaches came in and did some training with us, it was very effective. And there was some, some work time after that, so.
Yeah, I got, I have my paperwork here, so they talked about the, our Diversity Inclusion Mission, Mission Statement. We did a, I guess, a brainstorming thing where we talked about, what you believe to be the problem, and then, or what you, wait, what do you believe, and then how does it show up in your work? And then they had a checklist on how to address problems. I can't remember, do you remember what the POP looks like, principal, problem?
Problem, practice.
There we go, problem of practice. So, and they have a checklist on how to kind of address those situations, yeah. A lot of useful, good information, the presenters were great, and they had a lot of nice snacks, too, so that was a bonus.
And the second half of that, for the, for the concluding hour, was to work on problems of practice within their school-based teams. So that was really the focus after the training.
So Tony and Renee, you can thank Gabrielle and Jenna for, for putting such a fine job, and thank you to you two also for helping to coordinate that.
And I accidentally sat at the Baker table, I didn't realize there was assigned seats, so I actually enjoyed it because I got to hear another perspective from another school. So luckily, they welcomed me there, and we had a good meeting.
And then on November 3rd, there was a Technology Committee meeting.
So, you know, there was, there was kind of just some perfunctory kinds of things, talking about, so last year, the, the technology three-year plan was, was put into place, so reviewing that, reviewing some of the hardware, software acquisitions, leases, those kinds of things, just in terms of how many machines are getting turned over, talked a little bit about the, you know, RJ actually had mentioned, you know, when we give, or not give, but when we, when we loan a student a particular machine, and say, this is your machine for, until you graduate, or until it gets turned over in terms of being outdated, he tends to find that those machines incur less damage when the student has some, has to take some ownership of carrying that on from year to year, which was, which was quite interesting and shows some responsibility on our students' parts. The, but we've got a little bit of a preview with some pictures of the Ray Library renovation, so I can't wait to see that in person. But I, I think that was, that was kind of about it, and a little bit of a roundtable of concerns, issues that some folks around the table had, and how to address those.
And that's pretty much what I took from it, too, just talking about continuing to advance our technology. One of the other things they talked about is how the younger kids like the Chromebooks, Benham and iPads, which was kind of surprising, so they're going to be kind of implementing them into the younger grades as well. In the Chrome tablet, that's what I meant, yeah, not the Chromebook, the Chrome tablet. And that kind of goes along with what Matt was saying about them taking accountability once they're issued something and making sure that they take care of it, which is a good thing for them to learn. Also gave information about old tech and the new tech coming in, and I took some pictures on my phone, but I don't normally pull on my phone, so. And then also just talking about improving, you know, the, some of the other technologies in the school, I know Baker's doing some improvements, and then, like Matt said, there was a question and answer about people having trouble with some software issues and that kind of thing, but very informative.
As always, you know, continuing to try and improve the, the Wi-Fi and reduce blackouts and stuff like that.
And I'll just say, our next meeting's in March.
And specifically at Baker, they were talking about the Wi-Fi.
Great, thank you. Listed below that are the upcoming meeting events, and at the very bottom, we have the Budget Advisory Committee meetings, and Joe, can you just speak to that and when people can sign up and how that's all coordinated?
So we actually have already had one Budget Advisory meeting, it was with the Facilities Committee, they have another one scheduled soon. If anyone is interested, we break the Budget Advisory down by budget area, so there's facilities, special education, athletics, instructional, technology, and transportation. So if there's any community member that would like to serve on these advisory committees to fight, to, to provide feedback and to learn more about the nuts and bolts of each budget area, they can reach out to our Public Information Specialist, Sarah Buckshot, and we will be happy to have them. They are virtual, which has certainly helped over the last few years with getting actual community members and partners to be a part of the process. So we thank those that are on the list and certainly encourage more if anybody's interested.
Thanks, Joe. Next up on you is, oh, Sam?
Jeff, can I just, I'll lay here quick. I just wanted to thank Jeff for inviting us up to KU, Community College. They had an open house for advanced manufacturing, and some of our students, along with our, one of our technology teachers, and Joe and myself and Jeff were able to attend. And there were local employers that did, that do manufacturing in Central New York. And our students were able to have some hands-on lessons in pneumonics and hydraulics and motor controls. They were able to discuss positions with employees and programs offered at the college, and it was just really interesting to see them interact with all these people and look at different career pathways for the future.
Great, thank you, Sam. Jeff, did you want to say anything about that? Tell them about.
No, I think it was a great event. In fact, it went over so well with the employers and the different school districts that were actually doing another one next Friday because the Bosse's and Liverpool and a few other districts hopped on board after seeing the success, and so, no, it went really well. And it's, the employers are excited to get people interested in the manufacturing jobs and primarily in technician jobs, so we're talking about stuff they can start right out of high school, so. And there's a huge shortage, and they pay well, and there's quite a domain, so it was good to get some exposure there. And I know with the tech teacher, we actually, I showed some equipment that we had there that he's actually looking at, and I know Joe had gotten some quotes to enhance some of our school, some of our stuff at Baker. We talked about like the hydraulic stuff, they have some very basic equipment, but showed him some simple little kits they can use to enhance, and he got very excited about bringing that into the classroom in Baldwinsville, so there was some kind of unexpected benefits there, too, so Joe wants to speak.
We actually, the requisition went in last week for a couple of those items, so definitely a great instructional tool, and we wouldn't have known that these kits were available unless we had attended this event. So certainly, our students will be benefiting for participating in those programs.
Jeff, there's some of us who weren't able to attend, so when it's coming up next Friday, can you provide us some information?
Yeah, I can send out the invite.
Thank you.
Yep, and just like before, show up whenever, and, yeah, yeah, thanks for the reminder.
Before we move on to the student reports, or anything else that anyone would like to share that they attended that wasn't listed? Thank you, Sam, for bringing that up. Okay, next up on the agenda is a student board report, so I'll hand it over to Sam.
Good evening, everyone. So it's been kind of a busy, what, three weeks? But, I think it's been three weeks. A lot of sports stuff has gone on that I'm sure most of you are aware of. There was state qual, Wals for swim last week. The parade band also had a competition, I believe, this past weekend, to the FYW, per usual. Cross-country sectionals were at BBS. Being somebody that ran cross-country in the past, that's always a fun event, and for the kids that get to participate in it, it's a pretty big deal. Cross-country's a hard sport, yes, it's an interesting place to race, and I, it didn't go as well as anything the kids had imagined, but it's still just, it's an accomplishment to be able to be somewhere like that. The marching band was also at the Dome two weekends ago, I'm sure most of you are also aware of that. Talking to a lot of the kids who were there, that was also a huge thing, like the Dome is something we all know about. So again, just, I talked about the beginning of the year, being excited about talking about the things that our marching band and sports and physical programs were going to do, and that's all come true. I was talking to some of you guys earlier, the 10 weeks is already here, so this Thursday closes the first 10 weeks of school, which is kind of crazy, but also like kind of exciting. It's definitely flew by, like from my perspective at least, but it's also like, there's only 30 weeks left, and for like the 417 of us seniors, that's kind of crazy, like 30 weeks is going to fly by, but I mean, it's exciting. Sectionals for girls volleyball and football were on Friday, the girls volleyball team won, that's of course also super exciting, they had a really good season, and I know, like, I've talked to a lot of those kids, and, well, you know, hearing them talk a lot always, that's exciting, sports are good at Viva. It's November, Thanksgiving, there was a Student Advisory Council meeting last week, and a part of what we try to do every year is just thanking, whether it be staff members or bus drivers or administrators, and we brainstormed a whole bunch of different things, but one of the big things that I thought was interesting, the ones we came up with, is like, in our staff bathrooms, they wanted to do like some positive messages on like the mirrors, so like, it's pretty small, but like, I feel like for a staff member, like walking into the bathroom, it just, I don't know, I feel like staff gets overlooked, so it was nice that one of our groups wanted to write positive messages on the mirrors. We also, a few years ago, I remember, we, a group of kids stood outside of Baker and greeted teachers in the morning on their way in. I'm sure some teachers did thoroughly enjoy being screened that first thing in the morning, but like, it was exciting for us, and I know some liked it. We talked about doing that again, we'll see if it happens. Going along with the idea of thankfulness and positivity, the 10th grade class with Mrs. McRobbie at Baker, they did like a positivity gram sort of kind of thing, so like, it was a fundraiser, the kids were able to purchase, and you could call them tickets, I guess, and they could send a positive message to someone in the school. Again, just starting with the idea of positivity. Lion King Junior tickets are now on sale, so, you know, exciting. Student art is a big thing, I remember like, so when I prepare for these meetings, Mrs. Turbin and I meet like every other week, and we're just talking, there was a whole bunch of us in the main office this time, and somebody was like, well, there's a whole bunch of like art going on all around the building, and like, we have really good art programs in Baldwinsville, too, which I think is also exciting. Like you've got a lot of kids in ceramics classes and... and a lot of that still good stuff goes up around the building. It's just like kind of crazy to a kid in high school to be like, there's some like genuine talent going on here. So that's also cool. And then just kind of to wrap up, talking about thankfulness and Thanksgiving as a whole, just something super positive. I'm sure you've all heard of Beville. Mrs. Heaton does not like to take a ton of credit for it, but she's my AP Biology teacher this year. And her and I were talking about it the other day. And Beville has definitely been huge in a lot of families throughout the district and their community. And just one thing that she mentioned today that she thought was huge was that the families get a choice. It's like, it's not like, there's no negative connotation towards something like that. It's a family has a choice to go spend. Like, I think one of the things we were talking about is like Aldi gift cards. And that family can go and purchase whatever foods or goods they might feel necessary. And I just wanted to like bring attention to the fact that we have such positive things like that. And I, I don't know, that's just, it's nice to hear that people like that are that, like in our community are that willing to give money towards something like that. We're doing a competition, you could call it, at our high school. The goal is $5,000. And the kids are raising money. Actually, so far, it's going well. And there's supposed to be a prize at the end of it for whatever home room generates the most money. But, yeah, I think that's it.
That's a lot, it's been a busy three weeks. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is the request to speak. Can we have speakers this evening? Public comments are welcome. They are limited three minutes per speaker for up to 30 minutes for all speakers combined. They should not include specific individuals or positions. Unless appropriate, the Board of Education will respond by letter to the individual's comment question. Board members will not engage in conversation or comment during this period. Specific employee or student concern should be communicated to superintendent schools during regular business hours. If there are more than five individuals speaking on the same issue, please limit the topic to just five speakers of your choice as a group. We are all here for students, and it is expected that everyone speaking tonight will follow these rules. And everyone present will model the behaviors respected of students in this school district. How many speakers do we have, Kim?
One speaker.
Okay, thank you.
Lindsay Hotkinson. And she'll be speaking of the lack of transparency of the, of process. Thanks for leadership and board vacancy.
Thank you. And thank you for giving me a moment. So just a couple of things I wanted to address. So being a previous board member at a different school district, I have the knowledge to be able to go onto the NISBOOK website as a resource to look at what a process would be if a superintendent is placed on administrative leave. And I have to say, I'm really sad that that process hasn't been transparent without addressing personnel actions in the school district. I think it could have been very easy for the board to say, "Here's what we do in a situation like this." And are able to say, "Here's a process that we follow, the decisions that we have to make in order to put somebody on administrative leave, and when we don't put them on administrative leave, and what process we have to follow to take any next steps." I think it would be really helpful to the community to hear what steps you'd have to take by law and when you're actually able to make a decision. Hopefully, I'm hopeful that this evening we'll hear something more and not just wait to hear about it on the news later. Secondly, I do want to thank Mr. DeBarbury, not just so keeping it in the spirit of Thanksgiving. And then, thank you for mentioning, you know, with, with November and being thankful that, I think, you know, since we've been in the Baldenville School District almost four, five years now, there's been a number of times where Mr. DeBarbury has stepped up and led our school district from superintendent absences all the way through COVID and now. Just really appreciate your commitment to the district and our families and your dedication of navigating all of these challenges and circumstances. And thank you. Third, there is a board vacancy. It's been more than 30 days since that vacancy has existed. And I would love to hear what the board intends to do to fill that vacancy, to ensure that there's a balanced board and to be able to make decisions going forward with that full board present. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking to us tonight. Next up on the agenda is the consent agenda. Please, all of the Board of Education approve the consent agenda for students to be attached. Can I have a motion, please? 21st?
Second.
Second week. Any questions or discussion?
I just have a couple of questions in two different areas. For the substitute teachers showing non, that they're non-certified, what qualifications do they have to hold for our district to be a substitute teacher?
Do you want to address that, or do you want to?
So first off, in New York State, you have to have a high school diploma. That's the minimum requirement. Our standards are certainly higher than that. They have to have a bachelor's degree. That's the minimum. So we have three basic tiers. Those with a bachelor's degree. Those that have a bachelor's are working toward New York State teaching certification. And then the highest tier would be those that are certified. And based on our agreement with the teachers, or Substitute Teachers Association, we have to start with filling positions based on teaching certification and working our way down to those lowest of the levels.
Yeah, and I would just add that some of the, obviously, like, staff on that list are staff members who have currently held teaching certifications. It may have lapsed because they have not been teaching. Maybe they're not looking for permanent status, but continue to solve. So that also, I don't know.
Thank you. I just have one more question. Position for the weight room. There's a resignation for that position. But I, I do hear that that's a pretty, you know, happening place, and a lot of kids go there. So will somebody be in the interim? Or is it closed, or until that position is built?
No, that will be for winter season. They do have people that are supporting and running the weight room until they fill permanently. But the resignation was from an employee just because he couldn't do the winter session. He was traveling, a retired individual. But they are looking to fill that out and working with the athletic department to fill that.
Thanks, Sam.
All right, does anyone have any other questions or discussions for the consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It just passes 7-0 because according to open meeting law, we have to be able to see Sam as she is voting, and we can't see her right now. Okay, next up on the agenda is the leadership report. So I'll have Mr. DeBarbury go through that section for us.
So we're going to first start this evening, thank you, with the Strategic Action Plan presentation for Eldon Elementary. So they have a large number of folks that are going to come up to the microphones here, and they're going to present where they are, where their 2021, 22 goals, and how that's led into their 2022, 23 goals. So Mr. Coughlin and his team come on up, and I will pull up the presentations.
All right, I had my first technology lesson. It's a pleasure. I'm Tom Coughlin, the principal of Eldon Elementary School. And I'd just like to introduce our staff that are here to present for this evening. We have Jennifer Medwick. She is a former learning coach for the Baltimore Central School District who works directly with Jorgie and Eldon on our school comprehensive education plan. And she has done a terrific job, and we're so lucky to have her. She has a new position this year. However, she is still working with both Jorgie and Eldon. And then we have Brooke Batson. She's our school psychologist, followed by Jennifer, I almost said Medwick, Jaswitz. And she is a fourth grade teacher at Eldon. And we have Kim Hunt, who is our math teacher at Eldon Elementary School. We do, so, we also have support in the audience as well. And I want to thank them all for coming out tonight. So to the Board of Education, Mr. DeBarbury and his cabinet, I'd just like to say thank you from the bottom of our hearts for this opportunity to be able to address some of the things at Eldon, what we have been working on, what we continue to work on, and how we can improve. If you take a look at Slide 2, this goal has been from the onset of when we created the strategic plan way back in the day. And we had a reading and math goal of 10% for reading, so from the fall benchmark to the spring. And later, you'll see that we did actually meet those goals and surpassed them. So we're very proud of that. And we also increased our mathematics goal as well from the benchmarking that we did from fall to winter to spring. The second component is all students K5 will learn the appropriate, appropriate life skills that will lead them to become effective writers and public speakers. As everyone knows, certainly, that is one of the perfect qualifications for anybody as they leave high school and go on to college and/or a career. However, it is a work in progress because it is quite difficult. It's not cut and dry in, in respect to gathering data and so forth. So what we have to rely on for that is certainly the individual assessments from our classroom teachers and so forth. Learning gaps on demographics will be eliminated, which is certainly a long stretch of a goal. Because we're under the School Comprehensive Education Plan, we are required to analyze the different subgroups. And one of the things that we are working each and every day is the subgroup for the economically disadvantaged. A year and a half ago, they did update the School Comprehensive Education Plan, and they made it so that we were to analyze all student groups. So that means all subgroups. So in other words, when we get professional development, it is not just for a targeted group of students because it is good for all students. But nevertheless, we are on a plan for the economically disadvantaged. So we try our best and monitor the, the grades for students through benchmark assessments. Next slide. All right, promoting collaboration, innovation, and flexibility to prepare students for their future. We take a look at the current curriculum and certainly try to make sure we have the learning experiences that are just exceptional. That, what we do with this is we bring in guest speakers. We have different opportunities for students to go on field trips and so forth. For ensuring equal access, opportunity, and choice for all students, we are certainly working on this. Later, when Jennifer speaks regarding our School Comprehensive Education Plan, we'll talk more about this. But one of the components we've had in years past is the Positivity Project. What we've done, and we've grown from the initial onset of the Positivity Project, we did used to have a pre and post assessment, which we found really wasn't perfect in terms of, are the students learning? Because it showed growth on all of the students when we did the assessment for grades second through fifth. So what we incorporated for this past year is to make sure that it's embedded into the curriculum. Starts off in the day with morning meeting. And then we have things such as Student of the Week for the current Positivity Project standard and nominations and so forth. Brooke Batson is up for Slide 4, and she will talk to you about the assessments we've done.
All right. So here we have our reading benchmark assessment overview. So kindergarten, first grade, we use AIMS Web. And then grades 2 through 5, we use STAR. So as you can see, from the fall of 2021 to the spring of 2022, in grades K through 2, they improved by 20%. And then grades 3 through 5 improved by 16%. And this is the percent of students at or above benchmark. So then for this school year, fall 2022, K through 2, 47% of our students have met or exceeded the benchmark. And then grades 3 through 5, we have 52%. So we're eager to see, you know, what those scores look like in the spring. And then going on to the next slide. So this is similar to the last slide, but it looks at our math benchmark. So similar to reading, K through 1 is AIMS Web, and then 2 through 5 is STAR. So for grades K through 2, from the fall of 2021, fall of 2021 to spring '22, they improved by 15%. And then grades 3 through 5 improved by 13%. This academic school year, the fall of 2022, K through 2, at or above benchmark was 70%. And then grades 3 through 5 was 62%. So again, really eager to see where our students score in the spring. And then, yep, the next slide. So this is our BIMIS. So we have our teachers complete the BIMIS in the fall, and then in the spring, they complete a scale for each student in their class. There's 34 items. You know, the scales look at social, cognitive attention, academic functioning, conduct, and negative affect. So their endorsements go into those scales to give a score. At Eldon, we focus on the social just because it's the area of need that we see the most from day to day. And the data definitely supports that. So the fall of 2021, we had 23% of our students in the concern category. Spring '22, we had 22%. And then fall of 2022, so this school year, we've had 21% of our students score in the concern category. So how we use the BIMIS at Eldon, you know, we definitely go over in our data meetings. We talk about, you know, by grade level, the items on the scales that were, you know, what scale was the most area of concern. We also use it in IST to progress monitor students as well as behavior plans. So that's something really neat to see. You can track the progress to see the endorsements get sent right to the teacher weekly or biweekly to progress monitor. So, yeah. And the next slide. So these are our goals for this school year. For the first one, under achieve high levels of educational, social, emotional lifelong learning for all. At each grade level, the percentage of students who score at or above the 40th percentile will increase by at least 15% from fall to spring on either STAR or AIMS Web, depending on the grade that they're in. And then 15, STAR, so 15 for reading, and then 15 for math as well on the STAR AIMS Web assessments.
Thank you, Brooke. In terms of our current goals as we move on throughout the, the strategic plan, In terms of our current goals, as we move on throughout the strategic plan, we have the ensure equal access, opportunity, and choice for all students. We felt that this was a component that overlapped really well with our School Comprehensive Education Plan. Being that we're an elementary school, we follow the district curriculum. But we certainly want to be able to provide choice for all students. And one of the best ways we can get their input to give every child a voice is to survey them. And not only did we survey the students, we also surveyed the family members and so forth. One of the things that we are constantly trying to improve upon is how we can get more input from family members. And one of the things that we're going to do this school year is certainly at one of our events, or maybe several of our events, we're going to survey the parents as like a ticket in the door. For example, at our open house, we had a significant turnout of families, and it was just quite wonderful. And we know that at our evening events through the PTA, we get quite a few families that do enter and come to Eldon. So that's one of our goals, to make sure not only that the students' voices are heard, but yet the families as well. The next slide is going to be Kimberly Hump.
Thank you. And to touch on what Mr. Coughlin was just saying, we recently had a trunk-or-treat event over the past, well, not for Halloween, a week and a half ago or so. And we estimated that approximately 200 Eldon students showed up that night. So it was wonderful. It was a great experience to see them, their parents. But also, we had some teachers do some of the trunks as well. So seeing them outside of school is always super exciting for all of us. Moving along, some of the actions and strategies that we are working on at Eldon. We provide support through the IST process. So as was mentioned, we are able to look at students, whether it's behavior or academic. We come together as a team. Oftentimes, I am there as the math RTI teacher. The reading RTI staff is there, as well as the classroom teacher, any special ed teachers necessary, and Brooke. And we are able to put a plan in action to monitor data, but also provide what the students need to be able to find the most success at Eldon. IST is a great process because we're able to do it pretty much daily. We are able to discuss students prior to school, the 9:00 AM. So we discuss them from 8:30 to 9:00. And then they kind of cycle through the process. So we're able to talk about them again in another 6 to 8 weeks. We are implementing restorative practices. We have had this, and we are re-initiating it this year. Tomorrow, we are getting our like second, we're digging deeper during our PDC day on that. So some of us attended summer PD on that. And we were able to turnkey that to the staff the day before the first day of school on that PDC day. So then we will tomorrow, when we get even further into the process of restorative practices, then share that again at a future staff meeting. We are very excited about Second Step. One of our struggles at Eldon has been to be able to be proactive with social and emotional behaviors. And Second Step will hopefully help us to be more proactive rather than reactive. COVID was difficult for everyone, adults and students. Isolation was tough. And some behaviors are still manifesting and impacting students and their peers. And so we are very excited about Second Step because we are hopeful that we will be able to get back to the place where we can meet with students proactively in group settings instead of having to meet them after they're already in a spot where they're struggling. We have Positivity Project, which is wonderful. Every week, we have a new character trait. We are able to reward students with wristbands and everything when they're doing wonderful. They get their name on the announcement, which at the elementary level is everything, whether it's their birthday or Positivity Project, that's super exciting. Then they get to show off their bracelets to their friends. It's really nice because there are 24 traits. So we are able to hit every student in the classroom. And then in some classrooms, we have, we'll bring in Other People Matter and some of the other traits. So we're able to make sure we hit every student at the trait that they are strongest at, which is wonderful. We have implemented the three Bs for years at Eldon, being respectful, being responsible, and being safe. When students are exhibiting any of those things in any areas of the building, we give them little tickets, and we have an awesome book vending machine. So when they have acquired five tickets, whether it's through the three Bs or if they're caught reading, they can also get a ticket. Once they have five, they get to go to the vending machine and pick. My daughter attends Eldon, I'm very proud of her being there. And she got a book last week, and she cannot wait to get home and show her siblings and show her dad. So it's a really wonderful, wonderful thing that we have at our school. Our after-school enrichment programs are top-notch. We have wonderful opportunities for the Eldon students. We have a great staff that is willing to run the programs after school. We have a great turnout. Many of the, many of the clubs, we either have a waitlist or we will run it a second time in the year so that all the kids are able to be accommodated. We've brought on extra staff to be able to accommodate even the waitlists in many places. It's also wonderful because we're able to provide transportation. So the kids can take the bus home. So they don't need to be picked up if that's a hurdle. And finally, UPK is wonderful. I'm sure you guys are aware of that. But we get to see these little four-year-olds walk around Eldon. They bring smiles to everyone's faces. It's wonderful watching them actuate themselves. But it's also a great place for our older students to be able to be leaders. They can go down and work on numbers and letters with them, work on their color shapes, all of that. So we have a lot of wonderful actions and strategies in place at Eldon. And as Mr. Coughlin mentioned, we genuinely appreciate your ear. And thank you for your time.
So on top of that, we also have our Tier Two check-in and check-out intervention system where students are paired with another adult in the building. They are able to start their morning off great with smiles and good mornings. And then they can reflect on them, reflect on their behavioral goals at the end of the day and see how they achieve them and kind of motivate them to do even better the next day. So it's great for students to have that one-to-one connection with another adult. We have career counseling from grades K to five. Brooke Finglin comes in twice a year to each classroom, which is amazing for us to have her and to have her in other areas of the building as well. We have the High School Mentor Program. I actually have two high school students coming into my classroom right now. They read with the kids, they practice spelling words, they do math facts, play educational games. I have one girl that even leads a kickball game outside at recess. The students love having the high schoolers in to the building. And it's so great since Eldon's right next to the high school, they can just quickly pop over during their break and spend time with the kids and really connect with them, which helps with that social, emotional piece too, and just building that bond with other peers and other people. Our assessments that we're going to continue are our grades K to five persuasive unit on demand, pre and post-assessments. We have BIMIS again, which we mentioned, in grades K to five. Haggerty and Fundations is in pre-K to second grade, and Words Their Way in grades three to five. That is our spelling program that we have where it focuses on phonetic awareness and teaching kids how to decode words, encode words. And then we're going to follow through with our commitment of our School Comprehensive Education Plan.
So I've gone through this with the Eldon board when I presented the third year, and we've updated you as well in June of last year. Eldon was identified in 2017, 2018 as a TSI school for economically disadvantaged population. The state directive for the 21, 22 school year and the 22, 23 school year was to build a comprehensive plan that was designed to meet the needs of all students. That plan, both last year's plan and this year's plan, was created based on those four bullet points up there. We did student surveys and interviews, and equity self-reflection with members of the staff. We reviewed the district vision and mission and tied that to our work. And worked, of course, with teachers and leaders in the building, as well as parents. And I want to thank Ms. Jess Batson and Ms. Teresa Stoll for participating on our team in the past year. So the plan was designed with all of Eldon's team. I want to kind of touch on last year's commitments and then talk about this year's commitments. And I want to buzz through these quick because most of what is in my slide is what people have already talked about. So last year's commitment, one beat two commitments. Commitment was to provide relevant and engaging instruction that meets the needs of our diverse student population. Most of this work was done on PLC meetings. We talked about best practice instruction. We talked about creating more inclusive environments. We did training with our DAI team. We did training with Dr. Holly. And we continue to measure that based on student survey data, which I'll talk about here in a second, and meeting our academic goals, which they already went over with you. Commitment two was to further engage students in their learning. We commit to deepening connections among students, staff, and the community. When our team this year talked about this, we really found that we had work to do here. Basically, we had situations last year where student needs exceeded some of our capacity to really meet them proactively. So we were meeting a lot of students reactively, dealing with behaviors after the fact. And so a lot of the work this year is focused on being proactive with students and really making those connections even deeper. This was through our enrichment programming, through culturally responsive practices, through social, emotional learning, through strengthening the relationship between school and families. And this year, this work can really be done. Last year, we were really hamstrung by the fact that COVID precluded our family members from being able to come into the building. We want to continue to connect students and families with additional supports they may need. So for example, the IST process. We also talk about our work with Liberty Resources and access to get families any of the help that they might need to be set up with. Again, this was measured through our climate survey, through rates of participation in activities, and through our BIMIS data. So when the team sat down and talked about the four areas that we looked at, the survey data, the interview data that we gathered from students, we took those two commitments from 21, 22, and we turned them into three to kind of focus on some narrow bands. So the first one is that every child is supported and engaged in meaningful learning that's relevant to them. This is continuous work that needs to be done. We continue this work through our work with restorative practices, through Dr. Holly's work, through talk about best practices in PLC meetings, and further pinpointing the needs that our students have through looking at assessment data. We commit to ensuring every child has strong trusting relationships with adults and peers by providing intentional opportunities to build social, cognitive, and emotional skills. One of the things we need to know and understand about Eldon is that our support staff, our school psych, our school counselor, our school social worker are all new within the last year. So they have a lot of work to kind of mold their programs into what they want to make them and to really get to know the students and the needs of the building better. And so I think the intentionality of this goal is really important for them. And then the last one, we commit to providing an environment where every child feels safe, respected, supported, and a true sense of belonging. So again, here's where our restorative practices piece comes in, and setting some firm boundaries for students using those three Bs that everybody knows in the building, and really making sure everybody is heard in the process.
And thank you very much. We know you must have questions. So just to the Eldon team, feel free to jump in. We'd like to answer your questions.
Sure, I have lots. So before I do that, I wanted to share a little story with you about my daughter busy who loves Eldon. And she said, "Mrs. J, we love you." You know, we've been, we've had the opportunity as a board to be able to read the books that have been selected. And I approached my daughter and said, "Can you help me? You know, can you read through some of these books that you're, can you help me give me your opinion and your feedback?" And really great excuse to get her to read. So she just jumped on the chance. And I had to share one of the books she read. She goes, "Mom, there's some deep, deep consciousness stuff that kids are going to have to think about." I said, "What do you mean?" And she talked about, "Mom, this one book talked about loneliness, bullying, and kids are going to really have to think." So, you know, Mr. Coughlin, what are you teaching my daughter? So for her to share that, I just wanted to share that. And I really appreciate that because you really see my daughter, and you just make her just feel so wonderful. So thank you. With that said, I ask questions. The purpose of the question is to get them understanding about your own reflection as practitioners because I think it's important for this community to really understand. All of this is wonderful, but I also want them to understand why you do what you do and where it's coming from. Because if they don't, they don't understand and can't put it in context. So this is all about reflection. And I'm not going to ask all of them because I want to be mindful of time. And I'm not feeling that great right now. But I want to talk about the, very briefly, just reflections about the established goals for 2028, 21, 22. What were your key takeaways from the data? What did you learn from that? I know it's about increase, you know, I get it. But just upon reflection, what were your key takeaways from the data? What did you learn? Can you provide some insight about some of the obstacles and challenges you encountered as a team? And what did you do to sort of attack it and move the needle?
So I'm going to start by talking about the SEP team and their data that they looked at. So for our first commitment and the SEP plan for this year, one of the key things that came from the student surveys is that 18% of our students said they weren't excited about learning. Now, K-2, they're all very excited. They really, they really are. We interviewed more in depth our three to five population. We pulled them out of class. They got to really have a whole conversation with members of the team. And they talked a lot about how they understood what, and this was also seen in the data. They understood that what they were learning was important, but they didn't always get excited about it. And so that is something that we can continue to reflect on as practitioners. How do we get students excited about learning? What type of books do we bring into the conversation? What type of activities do we do? Our students are really, really, they love gamification of anything. And I think Mrs. Hunt can talk to that quite a bit. She does a really great job with that. There's about 10 to 20% of our student body when we look at welcoming environment and feeling like they belong that we really need to continue to work to reach. And so that was some of the big discussions that we had. And as a tribute to the staff at Eldon, when they saw 86% of people felt like it was welcome, that wasn't good enough for them. And they wanted to improve upon that and wouldn't let that one go for sure. So that and the fact that the staff really wants professional development. They want to learn from each other, really want to learn from other buildings in the district. They want that time. That was another big piece that we talked a lot about. So that's from my perspective that I can talk about.
And if I can add, in terms of your second part of that question, the obstacle part challenge, it's been a bit tricky. This has been an interesting year. COVID was by far the most interesting year. We've come out of that. This year is holding its own obstacles. As you can see, Mrs. Medway is wonderful. And it was a tricky adjustment for Eldon to lose her about a week and a half into the school year. And I think there's been some domino effect to that, which maybe is providing new obstacle for us. With her there, we were able to, some of the stuff I touched on earlier, some of the social, emotional struggles that we've had, she was able to pull some of that off of our social worker plates, off of our psychologist plates, off of Mr. Coughlin's plates. When we lost her, it was difficult for us. And we are getting to a point where it is the norm now for us not to have her. But it made for an experience that allowed some of our staff to be able to do their job more effectively while she was there. We were, we got used to Ms. Spierney being there last year as another intern, and she was wonderful as well at what she did. And so it obstacle is, and obviously, we have obstacles every day. That's what we do as parents, as teachers. So this is another one we are overcoming, but it has been a new challenge for us this year. So some of what our plan was, some of that interviewing was really, a lot of it was done by Ms. Medway last year. So we've already discussed what that will look like this year without that, other individuals being part of it. And we're already coming up with new plans. That's what we do. We adjust and we, you know, we make things work. But we, you know, Jen's touched on this. She's been with us for a little over a year. We have a wonderful staff at Eldon. We view all of the students at ours. So, you know, you might have 20 to 27 kids in front of you, but we work together very well. So we, I think, one of our biggest strengths is that. So we're able to overcome a lot of those obstacles. But I think, me personally, that's one of the ones I've noticed the most going into this year and looking ahead to what the rest of this year holds for us.
Just have one more question because I did have about eight. I'm looking forward to that too, Mr. Coughlin. So you've touched upon the strengths of the team, right? And addressing adversity and challenges. So as you go into the next school and going into the new school year, thinking about your new commitments for the SEP plan, what other strengths are you bringing into that space? And what challenges are you anticipating? And how are you going to, you know, what areas of growth, areas you feel are going to need to be addressed or sort of tackled or attacked to ensure those commitments are realized?
Well, certainly, every year is a different school year. It's a strategic plan, if we remember way back in the day. It's a living, breathing document. Some of the things that we have noticed is that we are not a chronically absenteeism school. However, we do have students who, from the data, would be classified as chronically absent. Our attendance rate is above 90%, which is excellent. However, there's these individual students that we're trying to monitor and improve upon. And one of the things that we've learned is that certainly our weekly meetings, we call it the Student Services Meeting, where we get together with the Liberty Resources counselor, Officer Nahal, our special police officer to our building, our school psychologist, the social worker, and myself. And we brainstorm different ideas of what we can do to improve a child's attendance. We are adapting throughout the year to try to improve upon it because we all know these children are so young. It's not really their fault. We try to... We try to encourage them and work with this individual student so that they nag their parents and don't wanna miss school. It's kind, it sounds a little far-fetched, but when you think about the logistics of an elementary setting, they're either brought to school or they're on a school bus. What inhibits their attendance would be maybe an alarm clock, which I've been known to buy for families to get them up in the morning. That is something that is a pitfall because we know when students aren't there, they progressively get further behind. And as I mentioned, we're not a chronically absent school in terms of our students' attendance rates and so forth. In fact, it's this really awful formula to figure out if you are a chronically absent school or have students that make you a chronically absent school. And a few years back, when we looked at our strategic plan and our SEP, we wanted to make sure our attendance is always improving. And we know when students have fear of school and so forth, that working on attendance and working on, even if it's just one student where we've improved, we've done something. Last year, we had a first grader who had what would be classified as chronically absent, missing so many days of each week, each month, each marking period and so forth. And we would make huge strides and have huge success where the teacher would have lunch if you attended for five days in a row. And that was such a wonderful achievement, not only for that individual child, but for the rest of the staff. And we reflect upon it that actually this is working, that we can reach individual children. So that, that came to mind when you first posed that second or third or fourth part of your question. But I think that's, that's ideal and wonderful for us. So, and we're gonna continue to make strides in improving attendance. And as you heard Mrs. Medwick say, we want to make sure that we're meeting the needs of children. And we certainly are in terms of the instructional programming. But what about the social emotional? And this is where the surveys touch upon that. You heard about second step. And now the teachers are taking over the second step curriculum and finding firsthand where the kids have needs. And it wouldn't necessarily be something that they would typically do in a day. So it's a learning curve for all of us and we're, our focus is all children. So we wanna make sure that we're celebrating the successes and really improving upon the pitfalls of where we didn't have success previously.
I was also gonna add to like the absenteeism thing. We've become really hesitant as a staff of saying, when a student has been absent, when they come back, it's, "We're happy to see you." Now, "Oh, why weren't you here?" Like, "We're so happy you're here today." So it's very positive reinforcement to be able to be with them and spend time with them. Another strength, I think, as a building, we're working on is building relationships, even stronger relationships with our students, whether it's through the extracurricular clubs after school, whether it is like in the library, they have Battle of the Books, whether it is setting up, you know, like we're back in the concerts and all those wonderful things going on. But we've also got cross-country and we have those great things. We've got a wellness club. We have different things set up that even during like, we have our school store. So we're able to pull auditors aside and they're able to build relationships with us. So I think that's another strength that we really were gonna continue to build on is our relationships with the students and building that so they can trust us to enjoy, to build that joy of learning and all of that.
I think it was a very excellent question. You know, what I would add to that or build upon that is, we know that you're there every day, working hard, caring about the kids every day. We're here a couple, a couple times a month. We get to listen to you a couple times a year. But to really be able to communicate to us, and this isn't a question for you to answer right now, but to think about the ways that we can support you in doing the work that you do every day and making sure that we're aware of that.
I think just giving us this time and hearing what you have to say. But I'm sure there's other things. I can always add more. But, you know, I think just being aware of what's going on. And honestly, I would love to be able to email Mr. Ashcraft, if I said it, I'm sorry, some of the wonderful things going on at Eldon that you could share with the board from time to time. Because I love to tweet all the great stuff going on in the math classroom. So I'm sure you guys have seen that once in a while on the district page. Sarah's wonderful about retweeting those things. We do make a lot of games, like Mrs. Medwick mentioned. We make it really fun. But also Lego, the Lego stuff is on there and everything. So yeah, thank you for knowing that we are there every day. We do care a lot about our students and we just want success all around. Thank you.
Again, this is probably less than a question, but your benchmark scores? I just wanted to highlight that there is some significant improvement in those scores. And I appreciate that, you know, you continue to work and everything that you've discussed with us, your clear passion for the children and making sure that that moves forward. So I just wanted to highlight those, that improvement and thank you and congratulate you and whatever, you know, whatever other accolade I could throw out there. So thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to share with all of you, you guys bring such excitement to your presentations, which for some people who are not educators, it's a little difficult to understand. So thank you for giving the examples, the numerous examples that you shared with us tonight and telling us how you're making these things work, the connections, because that's really huge. And, you know, I don't know how students couldn't be excited to come. You are all bubbly, you're excited, and it's 2015. And so thank you for what you guys do every single day, all your staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
So my final, so my final, I promise to be honest. So one of two things, I wanted to just emphasize and appreciate the fact that you brought up the importance of how we talk to children. My daughter's very sensitive like I am. She picks up when people are sad. She's very empathetic. And she even knows when her teachers are stressed and she's mindful of that. So there are times when there are tough days. And just a reminder and the importance to be mindful of that because she really loves her teachers. So the importance of how we engage students with our language in any setting is so crucial. So thank you. And lastly, Mrs. J, I just wanted to say, most people don't know, last year, my daughter went through a really tumultuous time. And we approached Mrs. J and it was so great because Izzy didn't have a healthy outlet to really express her anger and frustration. So it was under your advice to put together a journal. And she still continues to do that, so.
I just wanna say how well you all not only present together, but kids need to feel that support and just, I think it speaks volumes that you have people behind you from your district, from your school building, supporting you here tonight. And I think that's very telling as to how well you work together, how well you support each other, which is so important because that trickles down to the kids. So I just wanna say that. And then I had a comment as well that you wanted to add.
Not to just say the same thing everyone else is saying, but like, we've engaged like a high schooler. So I think like, that's, that's an accomplishment in and of itself. Like, I wrote down some of the stuff that you guys talked about just because like, a lot of it, I mean, Mrs. Medwick just talked about my like thoughts on a lot of the stuff that we're doing. And I feel like a lot of the stuff that you guys are doing, like, I think is interesting. And yeah, being able to combine those with like stuff that we're doing, it's just exciting. Like, I obviously went to elementary school, elementary school in Baldenville. I went to Mac and I have friends that went to Eldon. And I think a lot of them would just be like thrilled to see the changes that have come and like the positive things. Like, one thing that you just mentioned, like the positive reinforcement because there was some school, like rather than shutting them when they come into school, like, "We're happy to see you." I think small things like that go such a long way. It's just clear that you guys do care so deeply and just, I don't know. It's, yeah, it was nice to hear. And I would love to be able to talk about some of the things that you're doing, so.
Thank you.
Thank you to Melvin, Heshay.
Thank you.
While they're transitioning, we're gonna welcome the Reynolds Elementary School staff with Principal Chido, their team.
Testing.
Good evening. I'm Melissa Chido. I'm the building principal at Reynolds. I'm here with my leadership team, well, some of the representatives from the leadership team. Megan Ashburn, school social worker. She's in her seventh year. Cheryl Quinn, I'm not allowed to announce how many years she's been there. She's our school psychologist. And Marissa Casciano is a third grade teacher at Reynolds in her sixth year. So thank you for having us here tonight. Eldon did such a great job. It's hard to follow them, but we appreciate your time. We're gonna, the teams go into review the goals from last year and then talk about our goals going into this year. So I'll turn it over to Megan.
Hi, everyone. We did just pass that slide, but we did pick strategic pictures just to highlight some of the wonderful things that we've been doing. So if you were able to look back, they are very poignant. We picked for a reason. So our first goal was to meet the needs, the social emotional learning needs, and maintain 80% or more of all of our students in the low risk category. So when we met together as a leadership team, we looked at all the data and that goal was exceeded for Reynolds. So we achieved it with 87 to 95% on behavioral and adaptive scales. So what you're looking at is our conduct, negative affect cognition, as well as our social and academic functioning scale. So it's all five that the BIMAS does track. And this is important to note that this is just a one-week snapshot. Teachers are given it three times throughout the year. They are asked to reflect upon the past week. And that kind of goes along with why we continued that goal. Because it is just a week snapshot, we understand that it is a, just one pinpoint for a student's daily life. So there are a lot of tier one and tier two and tier three things that we think kind of helped us achieve this. For tier one, myself and the art teacher have teamed up to, this was last year, we co-taught an art mindfulness class to every student in the, in our building several times. There were different themes on mixing emotions and art. Collaboration was key in this. We actually even did it with staff where on the first picture of our slide, you can see that we painted a staff mural in our entire front building, which I saw you're coming to Reynolds in a few weeks. So I please, I encourage you to look, even in those student bathrooms, we painted murals for them to be curious, be kind, be thoughtful. And we think that was a big impact for the kids, but also for the staff to then get together and pick up a paintbrush. So that collaboration was very mindful for the staff and we really enjoyed it. We also had SEL lessons through second step. P2 Diversity Committee was met, it was formed actually last year and we met several times. We have a real hands, all hands on deck approach. Reynolds is a beautiful school. Our community comes together, we rally together. And not only does that testament to, for our students, but our staff, just we, anytime there's an issue, staff come together. And I think that helps support the social emotional learning of our students. This year, if you want to keep going, Mr. DeGardy, we have added an SPO to our support staff, five days a week. So that is something new as we continue this goal. We are still asking to maintain the 80% for the BIMAS. Again, because it is one snapshot. And even in talking with myself and Cheryl this week, she had mentioned that even pre-pandemic stats were that 20% of kids under the age of 17 are diagnosed with a mental health condition. And so if that was pre-pandemic, we're still only two and a half years into this. We don't expect anything more or less. So that's why we're continuing our goal with this. We also have the building-wide implementation of resorted practices, second step in every classroom. Right now, it is taught by a support staff, myself. Last year was a promisal worker. And this year, we thankfully to adding, the board added a school counselor to our employment roster at Reynolds. She's starting tomorrow. We're very excited. So that's going to be something that is co-facilitated for a while until, you know, we all get our feet wet as a support staff. We also have building-wide implementation of positivity project. We also have school-wide enrichment programs after school. We even have a travel club that I thought was such a neat addition that a first grade teacher is now teaching it for third, fourth, and fifth graders. We have four UPK classes that are this year. So we have approximately 70 to 80 new students in our building that are three to four years old. Just like Eldon said, they are lovely. They are so tiny. And now I always get to say like, teachers are lucky because they get, you know, 20 kids for a school year. I get kids for six years and now I get them for seven. So I just like, love to see the progression from three to maybe 10 or 11. It's a very exciting thing for a social emotional focus. Our tier two supports with this goal look like IST. We consult with teachers. We also have a part-time liberty resource, mental health therapist on staff. BIMAS is beautiful because not only can we look at the week snapshots, but we can also progress monitor for our tier two and tier three kids. So if there's a goal that they're working on for negative affect or conduct, we then send reminder emails for teachers to look at weekly. And they're able, we're able to see the progress of implementing our tier one and tier two and tier three supports and see how it is working. We also, I do non-mandated counseling. And now we'll be able to add the school counselor doing that as well. We have check-in, check-out with silent mentors in our building, just like Eldon mentioned. And we have the access service. So those are a lot of our tier two and tier three supports.
Okay, and I'm gonna go over our second goal from the 21, 2022 year. Our goal was across grade levels. We will follow the data seeking continuous improvement in literacy and math by ensuring that all students reach their fullest potential. And as you can see from the chart, our goal was met across all grade levels. We had that median student growth percentile across all grade levels in between that average range, which is 40th through 60th percentile. And I do think we did this through incorporating those culturally responsive teaching practices. Teachers are creating environments where every student in their class can see themselves and their communities as belonging in that academic space. And this is shown through the books that we're reading, ranging from a variety of characters that are at different ages, races, genders. And we're connecting and making those big connections with students' lives and our academic content. In turn, we see a lot of engagement in our students and they feel very empowered in their learning. There are many benefits to looking at the growth of our student percentile. We look at where a student starts and we see, you know, what is expected of them to achieve. And, you know, we're looking at higher performing students and those lower performing students through the growth. And we're meeting each student and making sure that they reach their fullest potential through that. We are looking at gaps and teachers are pulling their intervention groups to increase their skill levels. Sometimes these are heterogeneous and sometimes these are homogeneous. And we're seeing that with the heterogeneous groupings. We can incorporate building empathy and leadership skills. And those students aren't meeting with the same kids each time. You know, they're learning from their peers when they have those different makeups of groups. Our groups are based off of data and they're fluid. So they're, you know, in and out of different groups throughout the day and throughout the year. We hired an experienced elementary math RTI teacher who supports students in all grade levels. And we also are doing primary and intermediate reading bodies. So third grade students are going down to kindergarten and they're reading with each other. They're practicing, you know, their letters and their math with each other. And we're seeing that students who don't have the confidence in third grade with their skills, they're able to go down to kindergarten and they feel like the leaders. And, you know, they have that confidence to teach them something new. And we're seeing for kindergartners, they're finding one more face in the building that they can connect with. And we're just making connections, you know, throughout the building and through our academics as well. We have RTI staff overseeing math game club and they're pairing up younger students with older students. And, yeah, we also did a book tasting, which I thought was a lot of fun. So we brought in different, you know, table, table clocks. And the kids found out that they were at a cafe and they were tasting the books. And they're all different kinds of books, different genres that they could read and that really helped build the love for reading. So Reynolds is an amazing school and we're really doing a lot of amazing things. So our second goal, because of the success that we had with the 40th through 60th in that average range, we are boosting our goal up to make sure that each grade level is each grade level is at or above the fiftieth percentile in both reading and math. And we think that we can achieve this goal because it is a traditional school year. So we believe that we can attain and meet a higher-end goal. Like Megan said, we do have an all-hands-on-deck approach to provide students with the instruction that they need in order to close those educational gaps.
You know, Mr., can you scroll back up just one second before I move on? That picture, I wanna highlight, our school nurse tends to like to paint rocks and she hides them around our building. So I do wanna give a shout out to Nurse Judy Tag. So it's a big deal when someone, a class finds a rock. You can see the child in the back is holding it up. But it's a big deal when staff finds a rock. It is, I've never found a rock and it's been quite a few years. I'm very disappointed. But that's just one of the community building, I think, as a staff and as a community that we do. And I want that highlighted. So you can move on now. Unfortunately, the pictures on here aren't as flattering for me. So, goal three, I'm gonna spend a little bit more time talking about because it is the one goal that we changed significantly. Rather than adjusting numbers, we did adjust the entirety of the goal. So it was to participate in professional activities that would create, or that would increase adult and student experiences, interacting with people from different culture backgrounds other than the adults or their own. So while this was met, and it was met through a variety of things that I've listed on there, it was very difficult for us to monitor. We found that even just professional development outside of our PDC days, as a leadership team, we wanted to be sensitive to the needs in the building and also definitely realize how difficult it was for us to just manage that goal. And while we still want to implement that goal with fidelity, we decided to change our goal and, but while we did meet this goal, I would like to talk about, like, we had a ten percent increase in SEL and diverse literature and picture books across classrooms and the library. I enrolled two school-wide arts and ed programs to come into our school for every student. So that balloon mural you can see there, so while it looks like a fun art project, every student got to touch and be part of this giant mural that hung in our cafeteria for months. It was deflated by the end of month, but it hung out there for a long time. So many teachers implemented holidays around the world to learn about different cultures. We do like month-wide spirit months at times just to engage children in different things and to expose them to different diverse or equity, or different diversity or just different ways to include everyone. Pre-K had this beautiful lesson I got to sit in on last year and it was mixing different paint colors to try and match their skin tone and then just see the beauty in all of that. And I thought, what a cool thing for three- and four-year-olds to even just be aware of. So I wanted to highlight that as well. And then we did this really cool thing in the library where she wrapped, our librarian wrapped up books like they were going on a blind date or they were adopting a book. And it was a focus of a DEI or a SEL book that they would not maybe normally picked. And kids got to go in and it was a very exciting thing, like to go home and unwrap your book and then report back what you got. So, with that being said, we did decide to change our goal. While we do wanna keep focusing on DEI at our building level, we felt that this goal was much more apropos at the moment. So if you could scroll down, Mr. DeBarry. We noticed when looking at data between twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one to last school year, we had a real significant dip in attendance, if you look across the board. And we were, we were questioning that as to why. And we wanted to dig deeper into the reasons if possible. And we wanted to maybe possibly look at the DEI barriers to why our attendance had shifted. So, I mean, there's a lot of reasons that we've come up with. It could be possible that this is our first year without many COVID restrictions. Last year, we still had many in place. However, so in order to combat that, we have done lots of things already in the start of the school year. You can see that the PTA encouraged a fund-run fundraiser that they got to then slime two staff members in front of the whole school. And I was so excited to do that, thank you, thank you, Mr. But it got kids to come to school. It got kids to be excited about coming because they didn't know what day it was happening that week. So we kind of really focused on that. So it's not just school, I'm sorry, it's not just school activities, but it's community building. We do a trunk-or-treat. This was our, I believe, third annual one. We were able to kind of bring back after COVID hit and we did that last week, or two weeks ago. And it was a smash. Like, I mean, people were running out of over five, six hundred pieces of candy. And that's a lot of candy. So it was just a really beautiful event. Our PTA is wonderful, they help support book fairs, we do after-school enrichment. I mean, I'm gonna go on and on because we have wellness clubs, student council. There's a fiddle club starting in January that's really very exciting. The art teacher, myself and Ms. Chido implemented a kindness bingo, where each classroom got a bingo board, they had to then go and do these twenty-five acts in hopes that they could get a cover-all, but they didn't know what bingo sheet was coming or bingo pattern. So then when they won, their whole classroom had to decide on like a really fun, like bring a stuffed animal to school day. Melissa and I have also looked at the data about what months were the worst or the hardest months to see students in school. So what was challenging about that? And then we took that and then have now created spirit months, spirit weeks to get kids excited about coming to school each day. Our art teacher put together a youth, an art month of March last year to tackle the same issue. And so March, we actually saw, didn't, wasn't in our top three months anymore. So we're hoping that this year we can really focus on measuring, this will be measured in a five percent increase of attendance start of the school year. So we'd like to get back to that ninety-five percent as we are at the ninth grade. There's a lot of more awesome things I could name, but I'm, you know, in the essence of time. I want to give you a chance for questions if you have any on our three goals.
As a matter of fact, I do. So I'll keep it to one. In reference to the attendance, could you elaborate? You talked about you're, you're starting to dive deeper into that particular data. So in terms of initial findings or just in your initial findings, what are you learning about what potentially could be contributing to that decline?
I don't wanna repeat everything Mr. Coughlin said because of course we're in the elementary building, we're experiencing the same, the same barriers or the same hurdles. Because a child does get on a bus to come to school or they're dropped off by an adult. And when, you know, when we've run out of alarm clocks to buy there, we have to then rely on our other resources. So we do have a charity officer in place. And that is a wonderful step between having to unfortunately contact the state when there's such a high attendance of chronic absenteeism. And then we have access to the service access, which has really helped with those barriers. And we now have the additional, the SPO, who is able to help us with those attendance issues. I've noticed that it is, at least this year, I've seen a handful of students who are absent a lot. And it's working with those parents or those grown-ups in the house to then encourage them to come to school. We also have a book vending machine where, you know, I'm just giving out tokens. Whenever, you know, if they come to school, you're getting a book. And how cool is that, let's go down to the book. We also have two therapy dogs, which we use as rewards. Sometimes I'm walking the kids that do have chronic absenteeism down with Ms. Chido with the Lulur Mac. And, you know, we're finding that it takes a village. It takes the school and the home and then that bridge. What are we doing about the bridge? And it's a handful of different resources.
Well, I was gonna say also, you know, there's some students that we've discussed in IST that have had, you know, significant attendance issues. And sometimes when we look back at it, some of those students are some of the ones that were remote for an extended period of time. And we feel like maybe just haven't had as much of a chance to build a sense of community at school. So we've done things like connecting them with students in younger grade levels where they've become mentors or helping like read to them every day, a certain time of day. And some of the, that's really kind of helped a lot in some of these specific situations where they feel like they're really needed at school. You know, they need to get there to help their friend down to grades lower, you know? So, so just being specific and thinking about each kid's situation and, and why maybe they're not as invested in getting into school. Not that it's always on their shoulders either, you know? But sometimes that just helps.
And I would like to mention that due to the waivers expiring, free lunch isn't for all anymore. And so we have noticed an increase in hunger across lots of our students. I partnered with the Rotary who, you know, patched years. I've given out a certain number of backpack programs throughout the, on the weekends. I've now doubled and a half the number of backpacks I'm giving out on a Friday. So I know that's significant. So what we've done is, we had a certain amount of money donated to us. And with Ms. Chido's blessing and the district credit card, I am able to now go to Walmart and, you know, buy snacks so that every classroom has a set number. And kids don't have to feel stigmatized by going to the social workers office and grabbing a snack. They know that they can come to school and get a meal, even if it's a microwaveable ramen, ramen. But they know that they can come and get something even if they're not eligible for free and reduced or if they're still hungry. So I know that was one barrier that we did notice.
I appreciate that. In the future, with the mission, could we get an update and see some of those, you know, future learnings about what you're learning, how your action steps are impacting students, if that's okay? And I just once again wanna thank you for just trying to always think outside the box and always keep your students there.
Thank you.
Again, I just wanna highlight, like I did with Eldon's presentation too, that you, you set your goals and you actually met and exceeded that goal. But I, and I also wanna take that even a step further. Thank you for then, you know, pushing that goal further. And I think it's important to highlight too, and I think Tony touched on this, is that your, your willingness to look at a goal and pivot when it was necessary to pivot, reevaluate that goal and move it in the direction that it needed to be moved in, to make it an actual effective goal for the students. So I appreciate that. Mrs. Chido, I think I saw, who wears Waldo for best costume? All of you, okay.
It was a style of one.
It was weird, who's not Waldo?
The students loved it too.
I just, I gotta, I have to say this, I gotta chuckle when you said that you had a book tasting. My son is very literal and I can see him as a third grader actually tasting a book. Did you have a problem with that today?
I'm not gonna say it didn't happen. But they really did enjoy it and at the end, they did get a little treat with a juice box and cookies to actually taste something because I'm sure some were like, oh, seriously? I'm not actually tasting anything? So, it was really fun, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate the presentation and all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one question. So these have become, I'll say over the, over the years since we started these, much more fun now because we're not just looking at numbers, we're learning about actually what you guys are doing day-to-day in the buildings. But I gotta ask, what does a travel club look like in an elementary school?
It's a great question, I don't know. So Ms. Parker, she's a first-grade teacher. She's having students pick a country. Then they have to identify which way they're gonna research that country and then identify how they're going to share that out. So are they gonna do a poster or a travel brochure, whatever that may be? And they have to dive into the country and identify like the culture, the celebrations that they have, you know, foods that they, they eat. It's really interesting. And we have had a large amount of students like want to participate in the travel club, where after school, what we've noticed is kids will stay. Then some days they're like, ah, I wanna go home today. And they don't wanna stay, they're tired, it's been a long day. But we haven't had that issue with travel club. They're enjoying it and I think it's really awesome because it's something out of the ordinary that Mrs. Parker's come up with. And she gets the opportunity to work with students that she's had in the past as well.
Good, thanks.
Well, I wanna come to school for the day so I get points for books and I get to see the dogs and play bingo. You guys make it really exciting. And that's your level of creativity in trying to meet your goals and to meet, achieve and meet those goals and then to exceed. So it's very impressive. I just, I wrote two things down. BIMAS is beautiful. That's really catchy to me because BIMAS to me is, you know, that, you know, where you're gauging where kids are, students are, social, emotional, if they're having difficulties. It's just a different phrase, so thank you for putting it in that context. The other point was, you indicated, I'm sorry, what's your?
Marissa.
Marissa, I'm sorry. You had made a comment that you're making sure that students' needs are not at all levels. The student who is highly achieving and the student who is not quite there yet. And I appreciate that work and that effort that you guys put into all those students. Thank you.
I did have one more question and I apologize. As a, dating myself a little bit, as a kid who grew up on Nickelodeon and you can't do it on television, I have to ask, what did the slime taste like?
It was lime jello and it took about an hour to get it in my hair. But the kids loved it and, you know, I would do it again for them.
Thank you.
I just wanna say that the examples that you guys gave of how you're helping the kids connect, I know that the attendance was down a little bit. But you guys, the way you talk about the things that you do, part of it is that connection and making school fun for the kids to wanna be there. It's like little surprises that you have. I would see as kids learn more about that, afraid of missing something. You know, just hearing about it is more fun and you actually get to experience that. So, as I'm listening to your presentation, I just kept thinking, fun, fun, more fun. And that's, we need to have fun back in education. It seems like that was kinda hijacked for a period of time with all the expectations. And I know there's a lot on you guys, but just keep making it as fun as possible for the kiddos. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Reynolds, awesome guy.
Thank you.
So with that, we're gonna transition to our Mental Wellness Committee update. We have Carrie Amakia here to share on behalf of the Mental Wellness Committee.
Good evening. I have the pleasure of speaking to you about the Mental Wellness Committee, which you've heard of before, so this is an update. So we'll just kinda go through all of the slides here. Really, the most important thing to kind of, I think, point out or note is that everything we do in the Mental Wellness Committee has a focus on trying to ensure everything aligns, everything we do to the strategic goals. Because we know that mental wellness and looking at the whole child is just as important as the academic piece in those experiences if we want to achieve these goals and promote, you know, the achievement, overall achievement and prepare students for the future and ensure equal access. This is just sort of a graphic that we've used. It sort of became developed over the years with the Mental Wellness Committee. It really speaks to the model or the philosophy of our committee over the years. And the work that we do has really been meant to target these three groups, our students, staff, and parents. We've seen the value in this and we're always thinking of ways to include all of these stakeholders into our work. And also be sure that because it's such an important thing that we have communication and transparency with these three groups with everything that we do. So, in a minute, we're gonna talk about, you know, as an update, the goals and where we're headed this year. But in order to do that, we don't wanna just kind of recap some of the past work so that we can talk about how we got to where we're going. So just a brief summary, the Mental Wellness Committee really, it was established and began back in 2016. And that work continues today. Over the years, we've provided presentations on substance abuse, suicide, anxiety, social media, bullying, resiliency, and other mental health issues and stressors. We've done curriculum review and recommendations, that kind of brings us to 2018. At that point in time, New York State had mandated that students receive SEL instruction in addition to promoting some mental health and wellness standards. We were fortunate at that point in time because we already had the Mental Wellness Committee, the district committee level work. We were doing positivity projects, we were in a good place. You know, with Tony's leadership, we were able to do some crosswalk stuff and prioritize some standards to be able to be in a good place to move forward with the curriculum. There's a lot of overlap here you'll see now with the work that we're currently doing. You know, sort of fast forwarding with resorted practices. The SEL coach, just even the DEI stuff that you The SEL coach, just even the DEI stuff that you heard and you referenced in some earlier presentations and strategic plans, you can see all of that work now embedded in there and all of the pieces and how there's a lot of overlap between all of those things and how they really come together. Same with staff trainings and professional development. Over the years, we focused on trauma-informed practices, de-escalating crisis situations. We recently changed to therapeutic crisis intervention in schools. And we trained all of our social workers who are now consultants in the building, so that's huge. The SEL coach and all of the coaches really promoting that work across the district. Assessment and screening. And you heard a lot tonight about the BIMIS. I love the charm, beautiful BIMIS and I'm taking that one home tonight. And we expanded that work. So we've been doing that work in K six building or across elementary buildings, K five. I think six years, we expanded to RICE. So after that, so we're total seven years in. And then the last two years, we did expand into the self-rating with the secondary students in grade seven through 12. Combined with Columbia Suicide Severity Rating Scale, we did a lot of training on that to do additional assessment of students who might be in crisis. And I think, just to speak to that a little bit, because that is the newest piece of assessment and it's a bit controversial still, we're still working out some of the growing pains with that. So just to give you a glimpse of how we're using it as far as overall mental health and wellness, why it's important. It's really a snapshot screening. It has some items that assess critical mental health issues or maladaptive coping skills like self-harm, suicidalization and/or thoughts of that and substance use. The results that we're finding do align with the CDC's statistics. Seventeen to twenty percent of our students start taking that assessment in the fall and the spring have rated that self-harm item. It's, the choices on that item are you can rate zero to a four, zero being never, one being rarely and four being often, or very often. So some relevant statistics from the CDC is that more than one in three high school students present day report having experienced persistent feelings of sadness and or hopelessness. And that's a forty percent increase from research in 2009. In 2019, approximately one in six youth reported having made a suicide plan in the past year, which was a forty-four percent increase from 2009. And what we know is that that's only increased since the pandemic. So that was sort of the, I guess, having the pandemic happen and not being able to be in touch with our students who are on remote learning and being worried about the mental health crisis that was going on, really felt that we needed to do the self-rating. And I can tell you that in the fall of 2020, we had, our information really did align with those statistics. We had three hundred and eighty-one students overall in grade seven through 12 who rated that item. Thirty-six of those students received emergency services. In spring of 2021, this was decreased to two hundred and ten. And only one student was sent for emergency services. In the fall of 2021, we had three hundred and nine students rate that item with three emergency services. And in the spring of 2022, two hundred and one students rated that item with four emergency services. And currently, we're in the process of this fall. Baker has not done theirs yet, but we are finished with DIRTY and RAY and we've had a hundred and forty-two students rate that item. So I think some key points to take away from that would be that not all of our students take it. We do respect opt-outs, we have lots of conversations with parents. We have some students that prefer not to take the measure and will, you know, they feel comfortable having someone else to speak to. And that's okay. But of the students that take that, seventeen to twenty percent are consistently rating that item. We do see that there is a decrease from the fall to the spring, which is interesting. Meaning that I think when students are in school and they have structure and they're connected, they feel, they seem to be rating themselves more positively than the spring. We are noting that although we have a similar number of students rating that item, those, the severity of the ratings are decreasing, so threes and fours are now ones and twos. And we're finding that what you notice probably significantly, the biggest difference is that students who have rated the item, not as many are requiring emergency services because we're finding that they're connected to supports outside of school. Or there's a shorter waiting list to be able to get them into Liberty Mental Health Clinics or connect them with some counseling and additional support outside of school. And we continue to have open conversations with all of our staff, our students and parents. We think that sends the message and some of the students even I've spoken with directly that we care, we don't just care about their academics, we care about the friendships, their feelings and what they think about things as far as relationships. And we're helping parents have discussions with their children about how they're feeling, if they're feeling at risk or having self-harm difficulties or even feeling sad or depressed or anxious. And we've done some trainings, mental first aid trainings with parents and teaching them, working with our students on how to validate feelings. And then most importantly, where to go if students need support or help and where to find them. So looking forward, one of the biggest things we really wanna do and we're still and continue to talk about is that mental health first aid offers a teen-to-teen version. And one of the things that we know is that students will often disclose to a peer before they will an adult. And mental health first aid training has been very well received by our staff, our community members, even parents have taken it. So we are still continuing to pursue how to get that program up and running where teens are taught that mental health first aid and what to do if a student does seem like they're presenting some risk factors. We do have students that will email support staff, you know, sometimes it's the middle of the night. And that's not the most effective way to get your friend help. And they still have fears, you know, if someone tells me this and they don't want me to tell anybody, when do I cross that line, right? Cause that person's gonna be mad at me. So those are the things that we're continuing to focus on. We are restructuring the mental wellness committee a little bit. And I think following the presentations tonight, it's just more, a little bit more apparent why I think it's really important. When the committee work started, it was really reactive to some crisis situations. And also, you know, it was to have conversations about the why. Why is mental health important? Why do we have to talk about this? Why do we care? And we were in that place where we had to constantly have that communication with all the stakeholders about why that's important. And we're not in that place anymore. You know, following the pandemic, I don't think there's anybody that questions that we need to talk about it and address it or that it's important. It's more about the how and the what and so smaller action steps. What we found was that over the years, we had a forty-plus member committee that met forty-five times a year and attendance really significantly dwindled over the last two years. Mostly not because people don't care or don't wanna be there, but the time commitment is really hard, stressing families out. We had parents in the committee, we had doctors on the committee and they just found a hard time getting there. And so with the committee members not consistent, that was hard. And then we had added some student representatives from each grade level. And what we found when attendance dwindled was that the students talked more. In a smaller group of less adults and less unfamiliar people, we, our student voice was stronger and more productive. And so what we are proposing or what we're doing so far, and we're only a couple months in, is we're calling the district, sort of restructured that big committee that meets forty-five times a year. We have a couple people, some support staff and then a couple administrators who meet with student leaders and we're calling it a student forum. Where they can continue to talk to us about what they see, what their concerns are and how we can help. And then we take in, as you can see, the district or the building leadership teams are key in making sure things are consistent. You hear all the things that Reynolds talked about. You know, I can give you a couple of examples of things that I had, you know, Lauren Hibbert at DIRTY had just done a self-care monthly calendar and I saw that on Facebook. And then we did wear orange for unity or wear green for mental health awareness. Those are the things that are key. And we don't need to do big events that are poorly attended. What we need to do are to continue to do the smaller things that we're doing that have a bigger impact because they're not happening once or twice a year and being forgotten. They're things we do every day, they're habits that we're forming and conversations that we're having all the time. So what I'd like is to be more consistent with that. And so having a district or a building representative, we've formed sort of a district level leadership team where we have representatives from each building come once a month and talk about those things. And then how do we make sure, if Megan's doing this great thing over at Reynolds, how do we make sure that maybe, if Eldon can do that work too, and that we're being a little bit more consistent and not just have pockets of places where it's really working well and places where maybe it's not working so well? And then also, how do we communicate better? Cause, because if you see something on Facebook, maybe, or not on Facebook, but maybe you wanted to wear orange for unity and maybe there was a different way you would've gotten that message if it had been advertised in your building. So just, those are the things we're kind of working on or those embedded activities and making sure they're more consistent across the district. With the BIMIS, we're continuing to work with the students, you know, monitoring trends, fine tuning our triage plans, that's something they have a lot of feedback about. And so we're taking all of that into consideration as we move forward and developing programs that target those areas. You saw today some building level, or some building level data with the BIMIS, which is really interesting. That self-awareness and self-management piece has been rated at twenty-three percent in the red at secondary levels. And what we know is that students learn those skills when they're younger now, but they have trouble using them in a moment of stress. And so how do we help students use those coping skills in the moment is kind of our focus. That leads us to our goals. Continue to be parent community involvement and then that self-management and self-awareness areas are areas now that we know are data-driven areas we need to target based on the information that we have. And the next slide is really, you've seen this before, it's just kind of a reminder, it's a different take on the Maslow's hierarchy. You know, we present this a lot because it all comes back to realizing the most important part, that relationships, connections, fostering safety, belonging, the importance of that and why just really points out, and I think this graphic I liked because it helped us circle back to those strategic goals in the beginning. You can see right at the top, it actually says achieving one's full potential. And that you really can't do that without having a solid foundation of having your needs met. So when we talk about attendance, we talk about students that are struggling with social, emotional issues or not having food to eat, those are important things to obviously consider. And so just before I wrap up and ask you for some questions, I did wanna obviously thank some people. There's been a lot of work that's gone into the mental wellness committee and I get the privilege of speaking about it. But I have to thank Mr. Barbary because he really has been a presence since the pandemic, supporting us, the work that we've done. It wasn't easy to make those decisions to do BIMIS and we did meet some resistance and I don't think there's anyone that doesn't see the value of it at this point. So, you know, supporting us with that and the difficulty that kids experience and the overall mental wellness needs and self-care of our staff through the pandemic. And obviously the cabinet and the board members, you know, we've been here before. Jen has been on the mental wellness committee and I've had a few personal conversations with her. So just the support that you've given and the work you've done. All of our administration, you know, they bring this back to buildings and they're supporting the kids every day. The mental wellness committee members, you know, it's been a huge time commitment, but you can tell that that's really something, the work that they value. Our student leaders, you know, we wanna continue to empower them, but we obviously have to thank them because they've been a huge part. Community agencies, our partnerships with Liberty, BTA, Basba, our school staff, all the support they've given us. And then, you know, just my only shout out to our store staff because of the work they do. Those conversations are not easy and when we do the BIMIS work, it's very hard for them. So I can't, need to thank them fully. Do you have any questions for me?
Yeah, it's more of a request. We'll just clarify a question. There was a lot of data points here that we were talking about regarding survey responses, correct?
Yes.
Those were surveys done in our, above our student population. So my wondering is, and this is my request, right? Because when we think about our worldview, right, we're thinking about the why, right? Why we're doing it and then we, how do we do that? You know, how much does that cost, right? So when I think about numbers and think about all the support we're providing to more students in the district, for my purposes in terms of understanding the bigger picture, the depths of the work that you're doing and I really appreciate it, I'm gonna request for data, PowerPoint about some of this because these numbers are serious and we need to see them. And we need to see the type of work that you're doing to respond to those issues. And when you put it into that and create that context and create that narrative to see where we're at as a district, where our students are. And let's be honest, we're all suffering in some way, right? Social, emotional, right? I understand that isolation, I understand that, you know, the lack of, or, you know, the importance of having support systems to help us be successful. So I'm just gonna press upon and my only request, if in the future could we have that data so we understand that narrative?
Yeah, and I think too, I don't, maybe as part of our conversation, one of the things that we've done in the past that I could do again is not so much a slide, but an executive summary because it is a lot of data. So putting it on a slide is a little tricky to try to fit it all in there and make it make sense. But, you know, we've, and we've always done that with the comprehensive school counseling plan too, which again, that's kind of all overlaps with that work as well. But what we could do is put together a summary with all of that information for you.
Sure.
Yeah, I think that would be a great idea because then, you know, it helps generate the questions. I think that you maybe need to be asked to understand, and I agree, putting all that data and numbers, but the summaries that you've always given us have been very helpful to truly understand, get a better picture of what's going on.
Sure, sure.
Kelly, do you have a question?
Just a quick question, Carrie, thank you. You, you gave some information or numbers, a comparison from last year to this year in the BIMIS. So like, I can write down specifically, but two hundred, three hundred students, you know, indicated three or four level and then this year, two hundred kids located that. Can you give us a general idea of where are those, where are those kids grade-wise, age-wise? Are you seeing pockets?
Mm-hmm, can actually. So when we kind of look at trends, what we have noticed is that consistently Baker's numbers are smaller. They are, you know, and again, I can go into some hypotheses as to why that is and some of it's just my own opinion and some of it is based on feedback and some of it is, I think, you know, based on other circumstances. But one of the things that we've seen is that Baker students are older, they're connected to services and they develop coping skills. The Baker students are the first sort of cohort, if you think about when we started doing this, they, it was new for them and so they don't love it. We get a lot of feedback from them and some of them just, they don't take it or they opt out. And so we do have smaller numbers of students taking it. Now, the percentage is still the same, seventeen to twenty percent of the students that take it are reading the item. So we're only considering the percentage based on the students that take it. But we are having less students rate significantly overall in comparison to the other grades because we don't have many students taking it. What we have noticed is that the students at DIRTY last year was sort of a pocket where our ninth graders seem to struggle more. This year, that was not the case. What we found was the seventh graders. And so I think it makes sense and if you look longitudinal, how we've done, how we've ruled the BIMIS out, the seventh graders are new to the self-assessment this year. And so it would make sense that their numbers are higher. What I hope is that as we continue to do it, we'll continue to open doors to communication that it's okay to talk about this, these feelings aren't particularly abnormal. It's, you know, how severe is this feeling you're having? Do you have someone to talk about it? Do you have healthy coping skills? Is it a leading thought? Is it a pervasive thought? You know, that it's okay to have those conversations. The more we talk about it, the more our students will talk about it.
Thank you. As you mentioned the student forum, you were bringing it back to the students so that they're more comfortable and started talking about different pieces. Are students from all grade levels able to participate in that? Or I know you just said it's a rolling hour, it's just beginning.
We have student representatives from grades eight through 12. And so previous to this year, we had two students per grade level. And they were identified by either self-identified, you know, had had a conversation with either administrator or support staff and they're nominated in some way. Or, you know, a support staff felt like they were a good student leader and they were nominated. were nominated. And sometimes they stay on, other times, you know, they say, you know, I've got other sports commitments or things and I'm really, so if we had a vacancy, we would, you know, fill it. But now that we're doing it a little bit differently, we're opening it up to more students. We can't, haven't been able to include students from RAY because the students from DIRTY walk over to our, um, and they're supported by Lauren Hebert and they walk over to others' group and then they take the, the lead bus home.
Thank you. It's, it's, it's tough work that you do and um, a lot of years, a lot of work, years of work getting to this point that you do and your staff and the whole district. So thank you. I did have, I sat through one session through the NISBA conference and it was on um, data and reporting, um, issue, uh, issues that students may have emotionally. And I kept on hearing, and maybe I don't know, eight, eight, nine? It's like in reference to 911? It's, it's a number that you contact, no?
I agree.
988. Okay. I just didn't know if, if that's something, you know, to be part of the dialogue or in any other forums that to start pushing that as a district for students to be aware of if they are having feelings, you know, they need to speak with somebody or, I don't know, I just thought it was interesting. I'm sorry I have the numbers pushed around.
Oh yeah, that's okay. There's, there's a variety of different programs and supports out there. We do have a resource link on our webpage, but I don't disagree with you that continuing those conversations and pushing them up and making sure our students are aware of them is, is important.
Carrie, thank a lot of people, but really we have to thank her for her leadership with this committee. It is truly remarkable. I wanted to also point out that we can have Danielle maybe provide a clear update with at least the data portion when we do the school um, report card in a weekly, next meeting, the meeting after, I can't remember when it is. But we can go in a little bit more depth and then we'll make sure that the executive summary is done for a future weekly letter.
Yeah, so specifically I need to thank Danielle too because I forgot. But to, to just shout out to her that she spends committee longer than I have. It was part of her interim project. It's something very near and dear, close to her heart. And she, I could, she helps me facilitate everything. She's really the detailed person. So um, I certainly will be having her coach me through that executive summary. So I agree with that.
And I just want to also say that on this committee, since the beginning, my first year on the board and watching all the work that you and your team, Danielle, have done and watching, you know, the original, the goal originally was to educate people that it's okay and to share those feelings. And I'd say, you know, not having this committee where I agree, Carrie called a great conversation about the direction the committee needed to go to best benefit the students. For me, I think if people remember some of the reports out from those committee meetings, it was my favorite part was the involvement of the students and just listening to how brave they were and sharing their feelings. And I agree with Carrie, it's probably uncomfortable for someone like me that they don't see all the time sitting in there. And you're going to get way more out of it by being student-focused and taking it to another level for sure.
More to come. They have great ideas. They want to make videos for their parents and they have all kinds of ideas and plans. So we're excited about their work.
I just, I have to reiterate what everybody said here. Carrie, thank you. I know this is years of hard work. Joe, you know, the administration, Tony Renee back there, and then you see it in the presentations we saw earlier. You see it from the staff that, that gave those presentations about their students and what they're doing with them. And we've seen that throughout the years. So I just, just thank you for caring and teaching, or so wide, you know, for, for our kids. It's not just that focus of grade scores. It's just that the width of care and teach and, and education. I, I, as a parent, I appreciate that. So thank you. I think all of you who put in years of work on this.
Thanks.
Thanks again, Carrie. So the next couple of reports that we have out here, I'm going to try to bundle them. B through E, textbook adoptions, add them in the weekly letter. They're, the first two report, B and C, are for grade five ELA, they're whole class reads. They're for the narrative unit. The first text is Harry Love and the second text is Front Desk. For reports D and E, those are for sixth grade ELA. They are whole group mentor texts for the reading and writing units. The first book is the Armonica and the next text is The Boy Who Harnesses the Wind. And that's the Young Readers Edition. That one is going to be used for a whole group mentor text as well as a choice text. I don't know if there's any questions from the board and that you've had them. These will all appear on the agenda at our next more meeting on the 21st for approval. If there are no questions, then I would move to the final report for first reading and that is the report F, which is the field trip request for the boys' baseball team to travel and participate in high school baseball spring training at ESPN Wild bird's World of Sports Complex in Orlando, Florida, March 29th through April 5th. This trip will also appear on the 21st agenda for approval. This is consistent to what they've done in prior years, pre-COVID. We're excited to have them back. The one piece I will point out, due to cost, this trip will have more than two students to a room, likely to be four students to a room. And parents and students will sign off on sharing the, the space. And if for some reason they don't want to share the space, then we'll make accommodations to allow for them to have their own space. Other questions on that trip? Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business. Result that the Board of Education approved the textbook of Pepe the Lamp Lighter by Alyssa Bartone to be used in grade four ELA classes for students to attach. Can I motion please? Shelley first.
Second.
Second, Tanya, any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Next, item resolved that the Board of Education approved the textbook adoption of Malala's Magical Pencil by Malala Usasa, used in grade four ELA and social studies for students to attach. Can I motion please? Wayne first.
Second.
Second, Tanya, any questions or discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Passes eight zero. Item C, we saw that the Board of Education approved the textbook adoption of Each Kindness by Jacqueline Whitson by group, grade three, for grade three ELA classes for students to attach. Can I motion please? Jeff first. Second, Shelley, any questions or discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Passes eight zero. Item D, resolved that the Board of Education approved the textbook adoption of The Invisible Boy by Trudy Ludwig to be used in grade three ELA classes for students to attach. Can I motion please? Jeff first. Second, Matt, any questions or discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Passes eight zero. Item E, resolved that the Board of Education approved the Balmfield Central School District policy series 5,000, 6,000, 7,000 revised reviewed, new for students to attach. Can I motion please? Shelley first. Tanya, second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Passes eight zero. Item F, resolved that the Board of Education approved the contract agreement between the Balmfield Central School District and the Coordinated Care Services Incorporated for the Promise Zone Engagement Specialists from July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023, Pursuits to Attach. Can I motion please?
Move.
Jeff first.
Second.
Second, Wayne, any questions or discussion?
Questions?
Tanya.
And I know I posed it to you earlier, Phil, but just for purposes of, of the session today, just clarify or provide clarity about the status of the recruitment of Promise Zone staff. I know it's been an issue. We are hiring school counselors to the district payroll because we are unable to hire for Promise Zone roles. So in light of this contract, if we're hiring counselors, what's the purpose? Just if you could put that together.
So there, there are still Promise Zone staff in the secondary buildings. So the ultimate goal moving forward is we worked in last year's instructional budget and this coming year's instructional budget. Our goal was to transition so that we had a district-employed school counselor at all of our buildings. So that's always been a part of the, the process. We are finding a little bit more success with retention of staff at the secondary level. I don't know if it's the connection. What we were finding, because the county, working with um, CCSI to, to do this work, they had to hire hundreds, right, of Promise Zone specialists in their entry-level positions. But we're finding at the secondary level that they're staying, you know? And so our goal was to transition so that we have our staff, but still maintain that additional support at the high school, junior high school and regular school level.
And just to refresh my, I appreciate that. To refresh my memory, portion of the, they're paying for a portion of the salary for the individuals at the secondary.
Yes.
Because I know when it was first introduced a couple of years ago, right? It just, one of the questions I remember was brought up, you know, if we're not able to find people at the elementary level, can, I guess my wondering, can their portion of money be reinvested in our staff to do that?
The county is specifically dedicated certain funds for this partnership. Certainly we can have that conversation. I have a, a meeting with other superintendents and district leaders this week and we, I can bring that and put that on the agendas and know that other districts are having likely the same struggles. But I do know that districts that didn't participate in this program, when it was first put out, they weren't given that funding. It was set aside specifically by the county for that purpose. The same thing with the startup funding for the Liberty Resources. We were fortunate to have already had Liberty Resources and those clinics in, in the majority of our schools. Even though they were giving that funding to districts, we, we didn't get it because we already had them. So that's, you know, their, their use of the federal relief funds.
As I recall correctly as well, when we were looking at descriptions of those positions, while they, they try to address similar issues that we have in terms of, you know, social emotional support and mental health support and, and that, um, they, they aren't really the same roles. So, you know, Promise Zone helps support some of the, some of the efforts that we've got, but it doesn't replace having our own staff for the, the counseling. And that goes to our, our district mission or, or framework or, or whatever term you want to have in terms of having a consistent counseling program K through 12. So I think that they're, they're supplemental, but not, you know, intended to replace those positions. As I recall correctly.
That is correct. And I think it was evident in the presentations today too, that the value of that team, I mean, you saw the leadership teams, the school social worker, the counselor, the psychologist, the principal, the response intervention teachers. Those leaders are what, are who are helping our students on a, on a daily basis.
Joe, how many do we have in our district right now?
I'm looking at Carrie, um, four, five with.
Oh, Promise Zone?
Yeah.
So we'll be at four because we'll have one at RAY, one at DIRTY, one at Baker. And we do currently have one at Van Buren is the only remaining elementary one. She's doing great, is supporting the staff, like you perfectly said, by the way, Mr. Yager. She's a great supplemental support to them. And they currently have the school counselor only one day a week. So um, even if, you know, we're moving forward, there's a hiring process and then the transition and building relationships and it's still a support that would be there this year.
And I'll just repeat for Sam's, uh, so we have four at this point. One is still at Van Buren Elementary School, but the intent, we're not going to do away with that, right? But we did at this board meeting add an additional counseling position with a resolution. So the intent is to hire another counselor for, you know, Van Buren within the next couple of weeks, a month to start after the new year. But we're not going to disregard the Promise Zone. We'll talk about where we go moving forward for the 23, 24 budget. But the intent is for those services and supports to be in place at least this year because they have the person.
Joe, how many years was this arrangement with the county?
So initially the county was indicating it was a five, a five-year-ish agreement. This would be year three? I'm losing track, I think, two, three?
Year two.
Two? Two. It feel, but we, we initially talked about it three years ago. And so the county has indicated their, you know, they obviously feel that this is important. So whether they continue to fund beyond the federal relief funding and build it into their budgets, that's, I think, always a area of, of focus for them, but we'll have to wait and see. Certainly by us taking on that responsibility, we knew we'd have to do that at some point because we were actually paying for the Promise Zone specialists through our um, ARP money.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. That's item G, resolved that the Board of Education approved the revised rate of pay for the non-contractual extra duty assignments for the 2022, 2023 school year effective October 14th, 2022, Pursuits to Attach. Can I motion please?
Move.
Jeff first. Second, Shelley, any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Item H, resolved that the Board of Education accepted donations to the Balmfield Central School District from the Eldon PTA in the amount of $7,320 to be used towards new UHF portable radios at Eldon Elementary School Pursuits to Attach. Can I motion please? Shelley first, Jeff second. Any questions or discussion?
Just a comment. Just, you know, and just once again, you know, our PTA, each of our buildings go above and beyond. And I just want to give a shout out to the Eldon PTA Executive Board, Katie McKermick, Christie Ryan, Kim Pyle, Caitlin Edwards, Audrey, Knowledge? Kate Watanowitz, Rachel Miller, and of course, our principal, Tom Coughlin. Just thank you so much for always just stepping up and, and moving, you know, for our students. So thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Item I, resolved that the Board of Education approved the disposal of surplus equipment and instructional materials for students to detach. Can I motion please?
Move.
Jeff first.
Second.
Second, Tanya, any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Item J, resolved that the Board of Education approved reinstatement of an ECA club account for the Baker Orchestra Pursuits to Attach. Can I motion please? Shelley first.
Second.
Second, Tanya, any questions or discussion?
I just have a quick, just kind of procedural question. So if they, they've had them in existence, um, the, you know, we're reinstating it was it so during a period of time was what happened to potential funds that might've been in there during the time when it became kind of inactive? I don't know kind of how that works.
I would look at Ken for the funds, but my understanding is it hasn't been active for quite some time. We had a, a teacher that initially had the, the, the club that were doing, that were creating trips, field trips and that person has since retired. We've hired a new staff. And so obviously with the reinvigoration of wanting to do great things with students, they've asked for this account to be reinstated. But I'm pretty sure they used all their funds when the last person retired.
I think we also have either a policy or guidelines in regards to what happens when a club is no longer.
It goes to the student council, yeah? Student council manages any funds.
Thanks for the clarification.
I, I just want to make one comment. Mr. Carkey is the one who brought forth this, or brought it forth. So his dedication to make sure that the orchestra students are, have the same access to the other students in all performing arts. So thank you to Mr. Carkey.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Item K, resolved that the Board of Education approved the estimated health and welfare services agreement and costs of following school districts Fulton City, Liverpool Central School District, North Syracuse Central School District, Syracuse City, Phoenix Central School District, West Genesee Central School District, Solvay, Kalamurian Central School District, Marcella Central School District, Leedsport Central School District, ESM Central School District, Hannibal Central School District, Central Square Central School Central School District, Maswigo City School District, for students to attach. Can I have a motion, please?
Move.
Jeff first. Second, Wayne, any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Item L, resolved, the Board of Education approved the contract for the 2021 capital improvement project, phase one, for students to attach. Can I have a motion, please?
Move.
Jeff first.
Second.
Second, Shelley, any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. We've now moved to the roundtable portion of the meeting. Does anyone have anything tonight?
I'd just like to make a comment, and I've been thinking about this. I'd like to thank Ms. Hodgson for speaking tonight, and kind of spurred me to make a comment. It makes me sad to think that the hard work and accomplishments of our students in our, in our schools might be overshadowed by some uncertainty. I think that we've asked for the public's patience long enough. I appreciate the gravity of the decisions that the board has to make regarding decisions to leadership individually. I believe it's time to make those decisions regarding the future leadership of the district and community, those decisions in the community.
You know, I had the same thoughts as I was, we were hearing her speak, and I have to agree with Matt. I think it's time to move forward here. We've been given the patience of the community, they've given that to us, and I think that we need to move forward with the decision here. I think it's important, so thank you.
And we will be doing that as we continue through the process, which we are almost to the end of the process, and we appreciate the patience, and we have abided by all the laws and contractual agreements up to this point. And for all of us, this is the first time we've gone through this, and it has been quite a learning curve, and we are almost there. And we all know we're almost there because we've just had those discussions. So we just ask people to hold on until we take this last step to get to the point that we feel the district deserves, and that is certainty as to leadership and the direction that we're going.
Appreciate you for bringing that into the space, I really do. I think leadership is hard, and as a board and I think in the community, this work is not easy. You know, we've had difficult conversations, conversations we can't share with you. And, and you're right, you know, what I love for the timeline to have been shorter, absolutely. And I'm grateful to the community for being patient, but at the same time, just be very cognizant, taking, you know, everything into consideration. We want to ensure that we're doing this correctly and with fidelity, and with, you know, ensuring that we're doing this correctly, so there's no errors. So once again, I appreciate you for bringing that in the space. Once again, I think we all know where we need to go and what our next steps are, and we will continue to follow the process and the procedures that we are required to follow by law. And, and once again, to all of you for working in the spaces. I know it has not been easy for all of us, on the community, the staff, the students, and I'm so sorry that it couldn't have been quicker, but I appreciate, I truly appreciate the feedback, the words of encouragement, the importance of being temperate in this space so we're able to make a lawful decision. Thank you.
I'll just say, I do believe I can appreciate the public's patience with us. I expected a significantly more hostile boardroom in the last couple of meetings, and I think the lack of that or the patience they've shown is reflected in the boardroom and giving us the chance to work through this, that some of us have been on the board a while, some of us have not, but I think we're, this is kind of a first for all of us. So I will just say thank you to the public for bearing with us here and allowing us to work through this at our different paces here. More to come soon.
And I appreciate that, Jeff. The key word is working through that, and we definitely have not been sitting by doing nothing. It has been quite a process, and we'll continue working through that process until we can say what we're allowed to say, when we're allowed to say it. So if anyone have anything else tonight for roundtable? Okay, next section. Resolved, the Board of Education entered executive session to discuss the matters of student discipline or specific student placement in our program or that would otherwise disclose confidential, personally identifiable student information. Can I have a motion, please?
Move. Second. Who wants first?
Jeff first. Tanya, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. We can move into executive session, and will you be able to pull Sam into that? Okay.